Good afternoon and welcome to the Glendale Water and Power Commission's special meeting on July 22, 2013. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Kamargo?
Here.
Commissioner Chan?
Present.
President Yao?
Present.
Commissioner Jemian?
Present.
Commissioner Hale?
Here.
Next, please.
Two reports information. A electric rate plan.
Mr. Tataklian?
Good afternoon, President Yao, members of the commission. The presentation we have for you is a fairly lengthy one today referring to our Glendale Electric Rate Plan presentation. There's about ninety-plus slides in this. We're going to take our time going through it. We'd like to get your questions and answer them in as much depth as we possibly can. Some of the things we'll go over is an introduction of where we were, where we are, where we need to be in terms of what we're proposing. We'll spend a great deal of time talking about our community outreach efforts getting us to this point. We'll spend some time talking about our electrical infrastructure, our reliability and why that's so important, our five-year financial plan, as well as the real meat of this, which is the proposed electric rate increase. Bear in mind that today's report is an informational report, and we fully intend to go through this and provide adequate time for the commissioners to review it in detail, ask as many questions as they possibly can between now and the fifth, when we'll bring it back to the commission for a vote recommending an action to the city council on the sixth. We've really tried to do everything we can to make sure that we're fully transparent, everybody has all the information they possibly need. This is rather complicated information to some degree. It is a lot of information to take in, so we wanted to make sure that everybody had every opportunity they needed to ask the questions as they saw fit. Our city manager, Scott Ochoa, will make the bulk of this presentation, and before we go over to him, there was a video that we used at all of our commission, I'm sorry, all of our community meetings to start it off, and we'd like to go ahead and start off this meeting with that one as well. Why don't we move on to Scott, and we'll come back to the video towards the end just as a nice recap?
Mr. Ochoa?
It's a pleasure to be here with you, and we do have a rather exhaustive presentation that really is the net sum of the presentations that we had done as part of our road show to get out in front of the community at the number of community meetings. And so, we will go through in as much detail as you like, as quickly as you like. We will, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them to the extent that we can take down those questions, and then our staff will report those back, so that way we can work through this ninety slide presentation. We will come back and hit every item that you raise and get into as much detail as you wish. So, with that being said, as John indicated, we'll do the community outreach overview, the electric system, talk about reliability, the five-year financial plan, and the electric rates themselves. We will get to a video, I'm sure. By way of introduction, it goes without saying that in our hundred-year history as a community, for almost as long, we've had a very solid reputation with our ratepayers, with our customers and residents, but at the same time, we are riding a rather turbulent time at this point because of a variety of external factors, as well as some internal challenges that we'll talk about in the course of this presentation. Our revenues have flatlined as part of this Great Recession, and it's important to note that the largest impact that we face is that which we've brought unto ourselves with respect to a policy decision not to increase the rates over these last five years, and we'll show you the before and after impacts of what that means in real terms, both to our residents and businesses. We also talk about the various component pieces of our financial viability, from our operating revenue to the amount of money that we invest each year into the infrastructure replacement and to our capital reserve, or rather, our financial reserve program, and how those three interrelate with one another. At this point, there is a need for a rate increase. We have experienced losses over the thirteen and projected into fourteen respectively, at nineteen and twenty million dollars. We have been put on a negative watch by S&amp;P and Fitch ratings, and if you saw the report that Fitch put out, the single most important factor in their determination was and has been a reluctance to increase the rates in order to restore the financial metrics of GWP. So, that is what's weighing heavily on us as one of those outside factors. We also have a need for a bond issue. We have drawn down our financial reserves over the last five years as we have continued to capitalize our reserves and put them into new infrastructure, needed infrastructure in the system, primarily in storage for water and in some of the larger big-ticket items that you'll see with respect to electric, and we have to now focus on the distribution system. But, as we have drawn down reserves to the levels that they are right now, it would not be prudent to go further in reducing those reserves, but rather rebuild them, and at the same time, especially given what interest rates continue to be, although they are rising, it makes sense to do a revenue bond to try to buy big in this particular market and do as much infrastructure as we possibly can. Sixty million dollars does not represent the total universe of infrastructure replacement that we need to do, but it does get us about sixty percent of the way there. And the last item here, the strategies are tied together. Very key factor, the revenue bond market is going to want to see the negative watch mitigated and actually turned around as we go to sell bonds and move forward with an infrastructure program. That means that we have to overcome that single largest challenge that's been identified, the rates.
Mr. Ochoa, excuse me.
Yes?
For the negative watch, my understanding is that we're very rated highly right now, so when you say negative, doesn't mean that we're going to go negative B or negative A. It's actually just a little bit less than what we are.
You're right, A-plus down to A, and it's a negative watch on the going forward, which is good relative to other folks that might be at a B or a B-plus or somewhere else. But, I mean, and I appreciate the support, but that relativity of where we are and where we're headed, I think we want to guard very jealously not just the rating that we have, but the outlook from the financial markets as to what our future holds. So, absolutely, we're doing, we're not in terrible shape, but we know we have challenges ahead of us that we have to shore up because we have basically pushed them down the road for the last few years. Cut to the chase, what is it that we're asking for? We're asking for a five-year rate program. Eight in the first year, seven in the second year, five, then two, and two. These are system-wide rates, and we'll talk about what that means and how they vary based on the customer class. This would support, as I said previously, sixty-million-dollar bond issue. What does this plan achieve if the council is to move forward with it later this summer? Well, it does restore a positive cash flow to GWP by 1516. It gets us to positive net income. It does support a bond issue, and just as importantly, beginning 1617, based on the projections that we have, it allows thirty million dollars in what we would refer to as pay-go investment in capital replacement, such that with interest rates rising, we probably don't want to be in the bond market continually refinancing and financing these long-term investments in the system to the extent that we can spend the money, the cash on hand that we have, and not borrow for it. That would be ideal, and this plan does provide thirty million dollars a year beginning the 1617 year. It does get us closer back to the city council adopted policy of one-hundred-and-twenty-four million dollars for cash reserves with GWP. Still, we would be short under this plan, but at least it gets us back very close to where the council has mandated that we ought to be, and that is something that is locally decided. That is a decision that is made periodically by council, and there is some flexibility in that realm.
Can I ask you a question? When was that reserve most recently established, and what is the intent behind what it covers?
In '06, we did take that to city council. There are various elements within the reserve policy that cover a host of different circumstances. For example, an operating reserve, contingency reserve, rate stabilization, and capital reserve. That was, decided at that point to take a conservative position as it was defined under the policy, but as anything else, there is a range, and so council could have gone very conservative, which would be upwards of two-hundred-million dollars in cash reserves. They opted not to go there, but at the same time, they opted not to go with a rather lenient posture and go with something less than a hundred million. So, the idea is to get back to what the study that animated the reserve policy at one-hundred-and-twenty-four million to get back to that level. Now, council may decide, well, it's time to revisit that policy and adjust what that reserve level should be, but until that comes, our goal has been to try to get back to that level. But that was '06, the last time that that was considered. It does provide very strong debt service coverage. As you know, GWP, as well as the city of Glendale, do not carry a great deal of structured debt, so that's something that does speak to our favor, as President Yao had indicated. It's a very healthy utility in general. The operational stability is critically important. System reliability, system upgrades, and system efficiency, all are carried forward by this rate plan. It also does achieve the regulatory compliance, or at least gets us to a point where we feel very comfortable with the regulatory compliance, building on the successes that we've had here. And certainly, Mr. Lins can answer any questions for you at the end, as it impacts our ability to get off of coal, to meet the state mandates, and to sustain the compliance with WEC and NERC. It also, very importantly, in California, is able to get us into compliance with Prop 26, basically saying that the rates need to be tied to the cost of service and that one class of customer cannot subsidize another, which in the past, for public utilities, is something that had been done essentially because businesses didn't vote and residents did. You'll be happy to know, and we'll show later on in the presentation, we are today very close in terms of what the cost of service and what the charges are, but we need to tighten that up. One of the questions that we get quite often is, why 87522? How did you get here? Part of the issue for us was looking at, you know, how do you heal this particular utility? We haven't had that rate increase over the last five years. Costs for everything, for most things, most everything, have gone up during that period of time. Why are we trying to get it back in a shorter window? Why not go longer? Or, how high could you go in order to right this particular ship? At the end of the day, as staff, we believe that three to five years was enough to restore the reserves, return us to a net positive cash flow, and demonstrate to the bond markets that we have the wherewithal to raise the rates in a meaningful way to allow us to sell that bond, to do the work that needs to get done. We have triaged it down to about a sixty-million-dollar figure of things that need to get done sooner than not. So, we did look at rates that were higher, rates that were lower, rates that were more completely front-end loaded, rates that were more completely back-end loaded. So, instead of 87522, it was 22578, or something along those lines. The problem with that is that it really wouldn't work for us in terms of what we needed to show the bond market and with respect to the utility's cash flow.
In the process of deciding how aggressive to be in the spectrum of getting it done quickly over a longer period of time, what steps did you take to secure input from the city council, or this body, or any other stakeholders?
Not to the city council. We wouldn't get there until we actually bring them a rate plan, although certainly, as we developed this plan and went out to the public, they were aware. This particular body was also aware in the same fashion, Brown Act being what it is, that we kind of had a test run last year. We have been focused on wanting to do a rate plan for GWP electric rates in tandem with water rates. So, last year, water rates were increased and restructured in a large way. We brought the electric plan in consultation with the commission and with council watching, and actually provided a multi-year plan. I think this commission, if I remember correctly, and I'll look to President Yao and members Chan and Jemian, if a position was taken by this commission. Ultimately, the council opted not to move forward. They felt the economy was still too much in danger of being impacted by a rate program. But, the specific answer to your specific question about this particular plan really is a reflection of what was brought last year and ultimately left on the shelf. We knew that if we punted last year, this year, it would be just a little bit more dire of a circumstance where we needed to get it through, and that the front end would have to be a little bit marginally higher than what it was last year. Those degrees of separation from what it was last year to what it is today. And last year, in all candor, last year proved to be a tremendous learning experience for us in the context of outreach to our larger customers, various stakeholders, and the community in general. So, it gave us a bit of a dress rehearsal to get to this point, although in that scenario, we still had our general manager. Thank you. So, we've tempered it out over the five years. We've tried to take into consideration and balance the impact on the local economy versus what GWP can withstand, and we tried to get really back to that break-even point, the net positive cash flow in those first three years while taking stock of the regulatory expenses. We have seen the decline in revenues from our peak of '08-'09. Things have been stagnant from the start of the recession, no surprise. At our peak, we were at one-hundred-and-eighty-eight million. We're now down, in '10-'11, we were down to one-hundred-and-fifty. The 2013 projections, we're only at one-hundred-and-fifty-eight million dollars. For as large an organization as this is, that small growth is concerning, to say the least. But, so many things are outside of the control of the utility, from the recession to the weather, conservation, and just the economy in general, that has had a major impact. When we look at the layer of additional regulatory costs totaling thirteen-point-two million dollars, you can see how the impact begins to add up on the utility.
So, with regards to the conservation efforts, how much of the losses do you attribute to conservation efforts? Because, I mean, it strikes me that, you know, the best electronic is the one you don't have to buy, so I'm wondering how you sort of chalk conservation and energy efficiency up to a loss?
Well, the elasticity of the system is such that when we aren't selling the energy, the contracts that we have to purchase to make sure that we can still meet our peak demand still carry with it a cost.
Okay.
What the specific percentage is, if you don't mind, I'll have our staff report that at the end to you.
Sure.
I just don't know what the marginal cost is for that specific item.
Okay.
What you see here is in graphic form, last base rate increases, '07-'08, no surprise, and you don't have to be a history PhD to understand what happened between '09 and 13, and that's where the councils made the policy decision not to increase those rates. What you see going forward in this area is the depiction of 87522 over the coming five years. We'll also talk about this in greater detail. When you look at the fuel adjustment charge, which is a charge that is essentially a pass-through on our rates for things and costs that exist beyond what is contained in our rate models, so extraordinary growth in regulatory compliance costs, extraordinary growth in fuel costs in particular, those get ultimately passed through, but I think the takeaway from this slide is that while those were passed through in '08 and '09, excuse me, you saw these decreases in that fuel adjustment charge, and as they impacted the overall rates, contribute to that revenue stagnation in these years, and then, of course, in fiscal year 13, there was no increase. As I outlined earlier, the council decided to hold off yet another year. I've spent a lot of time talking about what has been happening in terms of outside external factors. Let's talk just a little bit about the internal factors, because people want to know first and foremost, what have you done to cut your costs before you go and ask the public for any more money? I can tell you that in the last eighteen months, we have reshaped the entire organization, that is, city of Glendale, and GWP, as a part of city of Glendale, really did not escape any of those cuts. At a management level, we dropped from five AGMs, Assistant General Manager positions, down to the three Assistant General Manager positions. We removed eighty-four positions from the books. That has an ongoing, a significant and ongoing cost, because that is savings that is recurring. We actually ended up imposing a contract on IBEW, much to the chagrin of everybody involved in the council, as well as IBEW. We were hoping to come to some type of workable accommodation, and it just did not work out that way. The takeaway, though, is that it's two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars a year in ongoing cost savings based on what was imposed on the union. When we talk about operations, GWP has helped consolidate all of its efforts in terms of those shared services with all the other city departments, and removing and consolidating office locations and making sure we bring everybody back on campus. We've reduced the transfer over the last two fiscal years, '12-'13, '13-'14, just underway, by half a million dollars. We have reduced the capital expenditures over these last eighteen months, basically staying only with those improvements and those investments that needed to happen as a function of safety and/or compliance, but everything else was zeroed out. We wanted to truly understand what the fiscal health of GWP was, and it seemed to me at the time, the best way to do that was simply to stop spending as much money and see where the cracks would start to materialize, and that, I think, we've gotten to the point where we've been able to, as I say, triage that spectrum of needed investment in the infrastructure, such that we're at sixty million dollars in this next five-year period. We've had our employees cross-train, and we've also, and we'll talk about in a bit, some of the benefits of utility modernization. A host of regulatory mandates that we're complying with, and if, I would defer to Mr. Lins at the end with respect to the specific details, with respect to the renewable portfolio standards, compliance with AQMD, if we do end up, well, as they impact Grayson and Shoal, new regulatory compliance from the federal government, and making sure that we have the necessary expertise on staff, usually in a contract capacity, because we are so short-staffed, we can't possibly have somebody for everything. Wanting to make sure that we are in compliance with the folks out at, as I say, SCAQMD, the Air Quality Management District, South Coast, and the EPA. And what does all of this mean together? We have a revenue need of about one-hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars. We need to increase our cash reserves by sixty-two-point-six million. We are hopeful to adopt a pay-go system of almost forty million dollars. We have operating expenditures, debt service on that bond if that were to come to pass. The prepaid cost for energy that we experience, debt issuance is relatively low, and a reduction in wholesale revenue that we need to address. When you look at where we are graphically, this is the one-hundred-and-twenty-four-million-dollar cash reserve policy. This here is the reserve level, and you can see we were up about a hundred million dollars in fiscal year 10, and how that has dropped off, and the dotted line is going forward for fiscal year 14 and going on. And here is the net income for the utility. Obviously, this demonstrates quite a dire circumstance. I would assure you that we would never get ultimately to this point, because in all likelihood, if the decision from city council is not to increase rates in any kind of meaningful way, we largely would be looking at divesting ourselves of the utility somewhere in this area here. But, if we are to move forward with a rate program, you can see what the relationship is. All this, of course, is in your handout, but what ends up happening with respect to the cash available to fund reserves, what is able to, what happens here with the return to net positive income, and our ability to fund capital replacement, all are healed in some ways quite significantly by the increase in rates. This just overlays those two slides together and shows you if we do the rate increase, and then if we do nothing and wait. And again, I don't know that doing nothing is a real option for us, but at this point, if the council were not to approve a rate increase, it's hard to know what exactly we would do, particularly out here in fiscal year 16 or by that point in time. Let's talk just a bit about the outreach efforts. The packet that you have before you contains all of the various elements of our outreach for your review and edification. We did have a number of rate plan advisory committee meetings where we had a set of folks, three from residential customers, one from a low-income customer, kind of opinion leader stakeholder, three that were commercial customers, and three that were educational institutions in the community. And as I said earlier, they helped to look at what the rate plan was last year and shave off some of those rough edges as we were going forward. Six community meetings over the summer months, two coffees with GWP in the park, meetings with specific groups of stakeholders, the Chamber of Commerce, actually a few meetings with them, some individual meetings at large commercial customers, the Homeowners Coordinating Council, Armenian National Committee. We did the customary outreach and notice to customers, eighty-five thousand letters had gone out. We had made sure that we had done advertisements in a variety of different community newspapers in a variety of different languages, Glendale being as diverse as it is. We made full use of social media, so we were able to do a number of posts, blogs, flyers, e-newsletters, and a number of flyers sent specifically to community-based organizations and churches. We went on TV, not just on GTV6, but also onto local Armenian TV and talk shows, so that way it wasn't just a PSA, but rather an iterative discussion between folks and taking calls and having discussions. Thanks to our partners in the press, this whole discussion has been quite well-publicized, for better or for worse, depending on which meeting they were covering, but overall, we were able to get the word out to anyone who was interested and wanting to know about what's going on with GWP. There were many opportunities for them to learn about it. We had Armenian newspapers, the Valley Weeklys, with all the different, here you have a listing of the articles and when they appeared, as I say, community blogs, newsletters. On the GWP website, the rate tab, folks could use the rate estimator, they could watch the video of the community meetings, they could watch the PowerPoint that was presented at the community meetings. And we did get response, folks, the hits, almost two thousand hits on the tab in June alone, as well as the FAQ section, which is a summary of the questions that were received. And that has, I was told that unfortunately was missing in your packet, so we did print that up, and you have that now, because it wasn't too difficult to ferret out what the discussion was going to revolve around in terms of the community meetings. And indeed, what you have, these eleven questions are kind of a distillation of what was discussed, and I can tell you now, why such a big increase now at this point in time? The shorter answer is that we did not increase rates, base rates, over those previous five years, and we are looking effectively to catch up, to the extent that this is a simple increase, and by simple, I mean not talking about the compounded amount that we'll cover in just a bit, of a simple increase of twenty-four percent over ten years, two-point-four percent, a rather pedestrian amount of increase, and some utilities, that's exactly what they did in terms of writing out the Great Recession. We did not, for better or for worse, and folks can Monday morning quarterback it, but at the end of the day, the council opted not to do those increases during that period of time, and at this point, we need that larger increase to heal up the utility from the previous years. Of course, the transfer is a big question. GWP has transferred revenues to the city of Glendale as its host corporation going back to the 1940s. This has been discussed and debated at the council level, almost ad nauseam, and if you recall, there is a discussion, there was an actual item on the ballot this last election cycle, to clean up the charter language that invites some of the consternation from a very small handful of folks with respect to, you know, why the transfer, what is the transfer, what does the transfer go towards? It's about twenty, it's a twenty-million dollars, representing a significant portion, the fourth-largest source of revenue to the city's general fund. The question oftentimes comes up rather cavalierly from folks, why not just do away with the transfer? Okay, well then, what departments, considering that we haven't hit police or fire, which make up two-thirds of the general fund, what departments do we want to go and reduce by twenty percent in the wake of fifteen-million dollars this last fiscal year, eighteen-million dollars the previous year, and I believe ten-million dollars the year before that, that largely have kept police and fire whole? So, unless we're really willing to eliminate entire departments like community services and parks, like library. and parks, like library, and I'm not trying to be flippant or intellectually dishonest, I can't imagine the council ever doing that, but unless you were willing to do that, you have to go back and hit public safety departments that while they have not had the same type of impact as other general fund departments, they haven't emerged through the Great Recession unscathed. There are a number of positions in the police department that were frozen, that simply have gone away, police officer positions. The fire department has eliminated 21 paramedic positions on an ongoing basis, not frozen for a period of time, actually cut from the books, to the extent that we want to keep the same level of service in the police department, to the extent that with AB 109 realignment, we're not willing to remove still more officers from the field, then our options are somewhat limited. It's like asking the federal government to balance its books, but not take a chunk out of Medicare, not take a chunk out of defense, and not take a chunk out of Social Security. There's only so much remaining discretionary spending ability that you have to try and draw this type of savings from. So if you didn't transfer the city's general fund, would you still need a rate increase? Would it ever be reduced? Well, the transfer has been reduced. Our goal is to reduce it, continue reducing it by $250,000, to get it down to an industry average, we believe, you know, the industry average, based on everything we see, there is no magic number, about 9% of revenues. Right now, we're still north of 10%. I want to say we're closer to 11% on electric revenues. Our goal is to bring that down and maintain it there at a flat number, or at a flat percentage going forward. Would we still need the rate increase? At some point, we would still need the rate increase. I would submit to you that, you know, don't draw too much into the correlation versus causation of GWP having a $19 million operating loss in this last fiscal year and the $20 million operating loss this coming year, because without any kind of relief on rates in the coming year after that, that number will simply continue to grow, because all of our other costs are going up. By the same token, when the city was relatively flush with cash, we were still transferring $16 million a year back in '01, when the pension obligations were super-funded and the city had more employees than it had ever had before. At this point in time, we're down to 1,588 employees full-time on an organization-wide basis, and we're just riding through the final parts, we hope, of the Great Recession.
Comment. So I understand what you're saying. Without doing the transfer, you would have to look at potentially making reductions in other parts of the budget, including police and fire. Although it would seem that there would be an opportunity to raise revenue through taxation or some other trigger, is that something that's ever been, I can't imagine that would be a very popular conversation either, but has that been entertained?
The, in the two years, or year and a half that I've been here, no. And the discussion that I've been party to has been somewhat self-evident from the council in terms of, if they aren't willing to increase rates even 2% a year, would they be wanting to go out to a parcel tax or special assessment of the voters to ask them to tax themselves? Two years ago, the council would not even entertain a survey, a poll, to ask residents if they were willing to tax themselves for library services. And so the idea of a general tax, or even a public safety augmentation, was something that was completely anathema to them. That said, however, being that we've gone through this entire journey about additional sources of taxation, we did, as part of this year's, this summer's Citizen Satisfaction Survey, ask residents, would you be willing to pay a special assessment for any number of different types of services? And if the response there is close to being 55% or even a simple majority, just to see if there's someplace to start working from, the council may be willing to take another look at that. Up until this point, because the charter allows the transfer, because the transfer over the last 60 years has become such a part of the revenue structure of the general fund, I don't think that the council's been willing to mix messages to the public by saying, let's go out for yet another tax. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Okay. When you talk about renewable resources, we do need to continue investing in renewable resources. We are doing very well now, but we need to get, I think we're close to 20%, a little low, almost 19%. We need to get to 33% in the coming decade, and we are well on our way, but we need to continue to do that. Renewable is the most expensive part of our portfolio, and so that is, that's something that we need to reckon with. We are, interestingly, number four was something that we got a number of questions about. Bringing back the solar incentive program, it's over-prescribed at this point. We will be looking to have that available once again for residents, looking to join that program and receive the incentive for putting on solar panels. The types of renewables that we're investing in, it's really kind of all types, everything from the wind, solar, the small hydro. We do have some nuclear, I don't know if we are actively pursuing that at this particular point in time. What will happen, the other, probably the second-largest question, we got the low-income senior subsidies. Right now, those are at $10 per month. Folks are wondering what's going to happen to them. We've told them that, in the presentation, as you'll see, $10 is still there as a placeholder. We can go as high as, we believe, 12 to 1250 per month, per account. We may be able to stretch beyond that, but I don't know what the economic impact would be if we went beyond the $12.50 per month. Is it possible? Certainly, that would be something the council would look to this commission on, in terms of what level should that subsidy be at. But even at 1250, you know, a 25% increase is relatively significant, considering what the increase is on the overall base rate.
Mr. Choa, would that be part of this future discussion later on in the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Senior rates, and what about the scenario of having tier, multiple-tier, low-income customer rates, or senior fixed-income rates? Right now, I understand that customers are eligible for the senior or low-income rate based on their federal poverty level, at 200% of the federal poverty level, right?
That's correct, yes.
So potentially, if we do like two-tier, maybe those at 100% of the federal poverty level gets a higher rate, instead of having everybody, so that you fix the $10, but then you increase those who are the poorest of the poor. Is that part of the discussion as well?
That is not a part of this particular discussion. It can be part of the advice given to City Council. At this point, it is a rather simple calculation on our part, because it's a flat fee. And I think fewer moving parts generally is better, but there's some wisdom certainly in what you're suggesting in terms of those who need it more, it's more means-tested. Those who need it more can get more to make sure that they are dealing with the impact a little bit easier, or more easily, but that is something that we would look back to this commission for.
Right, and that wouldn't necessarily mean that one customer class is subsidizing another customer class?
Correct.
The low-income customers are getting additional subsidy?
The PBC has held out, the Public Benefits Charge is held out separately from the rest of the Prop 26 requirements. So you do have that luxury. As I say, there is, because it's decoupled from the overall rates, there is a finite amount of money to be used, but how that money gets chopped up among that customer class is open to discussion, certainly of this commission.
Scott, on number five, you mentioned nuclear power in the context of the renewable portfolio. Does GWP consider its nuclear assets as part of the renewable, the RFP? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Let's see, so we have, why do we need so much money in reserve? We talked about that a little bit earlier. It's the policy, it's been established, the policy can be revised, certainly, but in the context of this particular rate plan, the reserves are more significantly impacted as we get towards the end of that five-year window. We talk about cutting costs, I've mentioned that already, pay cuts for employees. Well, you know, we have, as City of Glendale paid more for the employee share of the PERS pension than any other city around that I'm aware of, or in the state of California, to the extent that it's, again, evidence of the council's tough position on comp reform, and pension reform is evidenced by recently having imposed on the largest employee union and then, in the last three years ago, and then just this past year, this past fiscal year imposing on GWP, I think the council has the credibility that they are indeed tough on comp and pension reform. When you look at capital improvements, what type are we focused on? And we have that a little bit later in the presentation, but there is a host of programs that we are looking at, the ones that seem to be, the ones that are most eye-catching, the ones that actually have the largest, or some of the largest dollar amounts, and that will have the largest impact on our system. The Grand View Substation Upgrade, the Automation Modernization Program, and the System Protection Improvement Program, that, most of this is dealing with our distribution system. So the good news is that folks will see it out on the street, they'll see the value for the dollars that are being invested.
So, and I'm assuming that the $60 million bond issue is front-loaded, that's why the rates are front-loaded, is to finance all those capital projects upfront, is that?
To the extent that our capacity is, yes, at the end of the day, yes. Trying to get as much as we can before we get to that pay-go scenario. So development impacting Glendale, you see a lot of development in town. Actually, no, those developments are paying for themselves, and in fact, will be generating relatively more to GWP by way of the meter charges and the separate meters and separate billing for those water customers. The, well, we have more rate increases after this. Certainly was a good and fair question that we got from the residents, to be sure, and it spoke to this discussion of why a five-year rate plan. If we were to go with, say, a three-year rate plan of 8.75, there is some reason to believe that we might be higher than 2%, depending on what the market is, depending on what the economy and the overall environment is, if we are in higher levels in year four and year five. And that's not a boogeyman to scare folks, it's simply a reflection of what, as staff, we've tried to put together based on the previous rate plan, and now this rate plan, of having some semblance of good faith with the rate payer, that if you are, are you willing to pay more in that front end, we're willing to go lower on the four- and five-year, as opposed to doing a higher three-year rate plan, a potentially a relatively higher four- and five-year rate plan. We want to show, as I say, good faith. You've seen a good deal of this, and I will go quickly, but this is a slide that shows where all of our resources are over the western United States. This shows you what our power mix is, most importantly, the 18, it's almost 19%, 18.8 on renewable, and what'll happen by 2020 on our power mix. We need to get to 33%, and there is ongoing talk, I'm sure you've heard the same, of going still higher than that, the same as what's happened in the waste management industry, where AB 939 changed the landscape, and we're going to probably change yet again. This is our local distribution system, you can see how the system loops and connects to one another. I know Ramon showed you some of this last, at your last meeting. Again, the size and scope of our organization.
Back to the portfolio, real quick. The 18% coal portion that's estimated at 2020 is going to have to be zero by law under SB 1368. Is that contemplated as part of this rate mix, or is that something that's outside the?
I think that's going to be outside, yeah? Okay. Again, you get the idea of the scope, 84,000, almost 85,000 meters in terms, that's the customer base, 12 substations, 108 feeders, 550 miles of line. So we've had our challenges, and I'm happy to report to you that, overall, we've responded quite well. Back going into the 90s, Northridge hit everyone pretty hard, we grew up pretty quick. Deregulation had a very destabilizing impact on us, especially with respect to capital investment, and as a result, we ended up having to put more money in relative to what we had in the past, in the early 2000s. You had the energy crisis, the immediate aftermath of deregulation, and from there, the investments that were made by GWP have served the community very, very well, most notably in the 2011 windstorm, is something we talk about quite often, we're very proud of it, that when everyone else, most everyone else was still dark, we were helping folks get back on their feet. When we look at what the challenges are, the idea here is to make sure that not just are we keeping the lights lit, but we're also putting dollars where they need to go, the Jiffy Lube model, you know, you can pay me now, pay me later, and if you pay me later, you're going to pay me relatively more. The idea here is to triage the infrastructure needs and do the elements that are most in need of repair first, and that the things that we can push off, we do until a point of we can hit pay-go in the out years of this and future plans. We're looking at $95 million total investment, electric services, generation, transmission, the general plant relatively small. Utility modernization, this has taken place over the previous several years. People talk about the utility modernization, smart grid, but it's important to note that we got to the net cost of that $43 million, it was only 22.9 only, to GWP, because we were able to get a Department of Energy grant. That $43 million in recent capital investment has been made up of all of these different areas. When you see the generation, transmission, has been relatively small to the electric services, and the allocated plant, general, or general plant, has been even less so, and we're trying to catch up in that area now. As I say, utility modernization is something that is, can be controversial, depending on how you feel about the digitization and some of the other surrounding issues as it relates to smart grid. We were one of the first utilities to get in, and I think that's benefited Glendale by being a leader among other utilities. When you talk about some of those benefits for the smart grid program and utility modernization, we were able to convert it, to convert the entire system over. Right now, we're using it primarily for billing, but we are also having a lot of success in diagnosing what's happening within our organization. I know Ramon talked to you last meeting about cable that had exploded, and we were able to isolate and focus on it because of the data that we were getting back from smart grid. When you look at the number of outages by way of comparison, you can see that Glendale is actually doing quite well. It hasn't always been that way. In fact, at the beginning of this last decade, we were having our share of challenges, but I think at this point, we're doing quite well. In fact, in fairness to one of our neighboring utilities here, you know, they were having trouble, that's the windstorm that peaked up at that point. But when you look at where Glendale is, we are, we're close, oftentimes hitting the goal, but we know that we have some improvement to do, and a lot of that will come with reinvestment in the infrastructure. All right, let's talk about the main event, the actual proposed rate increase, and what it means and what it isn't. So here you see, again, 8.7522, but when we look at customer class, for the single-family residential customer, as it breaks down, the actual cost of service to the revenue needed for the operation, it's actually 8.8, and then by the same token, as you see the other classes of customer, theirs are relatively less, 7%, 7.4, 7.9. This gets us into that compliance with Prop 26. It is distasteful, I can tell you, in the meetings that we had with residents, why are they paying marginally more than a business is paying? I live here, and we would empathize with them, surely, but the strictures of the law kind of are what they are, and so we need to make sure we're tying back cost to the cost of the provision of service. The simple increase, while it's 24% on a system-wide basis, when you compound that, you actually see it's 26.3%. This took a while to explain to folks, because we want to be as open and transparent as absolutely possible. When we say it's 8.7522, you do the math, and it comes out to 24%, but understanding that each year compounds on the last, it's 26.3. What does that mean for a single-family rate payer? 29% over those five years. I wish I could spin it a different way, and in fact, I cannot. It is essentially what it is. But again, in terms of wanting to make sure you put it into the appropriate context, when you consider the previous five years of no rate increases, and where this would leave you at the end of this five-year rate cycle, 2.9% on electrical service, I think is something that most folks don't get excited about. We simply made a policy choice, and now we're having to reconcile with that choice. You see across the bottom what the compounded increases are for the different customer classes, and we'll talk about what those classes are. And here you see what the, where the revenue comes from, the percentage of our retail revenue, 36% of it is coming from those small, single-family rate payers, marginally less here on the, let me see, it's on the next one?
Question?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier that a version of this presentation was used in the community forums?
Yes, sir.
So was this type of data shared?
Yes, sir.
Part of those forums, and that's where you're getting the feedback that you're talking about now?
Yes. I was, I personally was at the, four of the last six, the larger community meetings, and it was, it was an interesting mix of folks. I think one, the strong takeaway that I got, especially when they saw this slide, was that, one, they were upset about this number, quite honestly. was that, one, they were upset about, about this number, quite honestly, and then when you got them in smaller groups, were able to talk to them one-on-one and listen to what their complaint was, and oftentimes the complaint was, "Well, why didn't you just increase it 3% a year for, you know, all those other years?" Well, I mean, at this point, it's, you know, water off a duck's back, you know, you really can't do too much about that. And when we sent them over to the rate calculators so they could see what the impact would be in terms of real dollars on their account, things generally escalated. What I took away from a lot of those meetings was that folks were just upset in general with everything, the economy and everything else, but they could at least understand what the cost of doing business here was. And talking with businesses, businesses are still having a hard time, period, and so I think from any, any degree of explanation, context, or rationale, oftentimes is incongruent with their focus on what that bottom line is. Ironically enough, while a comparative look at rates in the surrounding area for competing utilities and communities really did nothing to assage the angst of residents, that actually helped contextualize a great deal for the businesses, because they were able to say, "Well, okay, well, if I went somewhere else, kind of the cost is what it is." So understanding, I think that served us well, is understanding what the needs of the various customer classes were and trying to, at the end of the, empathize with them and give them as much time as they wanted, went a long way. This CIP summary, when you see the $59 million over these next five years, this is what we're looking to achieve, and you see how it breaks out from the, I'm sorry? Right. All the distribution capital, and you see what the needs are, power management, allocated capital, but as I said at the beginning, distribution is going to be the primary area of focus for us. Again, do nothing, we cannot invest in the, we will see the resources and reserves continue to draw down, and you'll see the net operating income continue to go lower, or we can get back to something that is much more functional. I'm sorry that this looks a little bit crowded of a slide. You've seen much of this before in those previous slides. I do want to point out two things. Here is the minimum debt service, this dotted line that's hovering right around the break-even point. With this rate plan, you can see that we are hovering 5.8, 5.2, 5.8 at its lowest point, 3.5 times our ability to make debt service payments, and getting back up to a very healthy margin. So I think in addition to making sure that we have the investment, making sure that we're able to restore the reserves, we are able to demonstrate to the bond market that we are restored and very, very healthy as a utility. This just shows those two overlaid together. So you've seen this. This is where we were '07 with a 12% rate increase, 5.1% increase here in '08, nothing in the intervening years, and this is what we're asking for in the coming five years. By way of the market, we know the LADWP, last year, the fiscal year that was 1213, got a 4.5% increase, they got 5.8 approved for this, this current fiscal year. Pasadena just wrapped up a five-year plan, they ended it in 2012 with 2.3% increase, and they have a very small increase upcoming right now. Burbank, very similar. Those two utilities, I have to give them a lot of credit, were able to put smaller increases in place for the duration of the recession and are doing smaller increases on a going-forward basis. SCE is, we have a 7.7% rate increase as of January of 13. Taking from the Department of Energy's report, this shows the utilities, BWP, Pasadena, and LADWP, as well as Glendale, over the five-year, the five-year period from when we were largely dark in terms of that rate increase, and then going forward from 2014 on. So '07, we had an increase, '08, we had an increase. The decreases here are reflections of the fuel rate adjustment charges, and if you saw, you're going to see in the next slide, that these charges actually were reduced. One of the common refrains that we heard from folks is, "Yeah, you haven't had a base rate increase, but you've increased those, those fuel adjustment charges," and we did. But we also ratcheted those back down because, again, it's a pass-through payment for us. Thus, at the end of the day, with the proposed first year, the 2014 increase, when you look back to 2007, 12.5% increase, cumulative increase since '06, '07 versus what other agencies are offering their rate payers. I think it helps demonstrate the story that, that we are telling, but even more so, it gives you an idea that there is value in GWP based on what people receive and the service that people receive at the same time for that, that cost. We talked a little bit about those fuel adjustment, the rate adjustment charges. So as part of our rate structure, I'm sure this is similar for any utility, the model that is put forth as part of a rate plan incorporates increases, proposed increases, prospective increases for base rates, for the various cost drivers, employment costs, things like that, as well as for foreseeable costs in, or estimated costs in natural gas and regulatory requirements and what have you. And then there are adjustable charges for anything that exists beyond that which is in the pro forma, we are able to present the city council and this body with a series of options, either adjusting the adjustment charges, or dipping into reserves, or doing nothing and just running negative, or reducing costs, or coming back to the residents for yet another rate increase. You have all those different options. We have used adjustable charges, and to the extent that folks think that adjustable charges only go one way, I have to tell you that they don't. When you look at the FAC for the fiscal year '08 and '09, sure enough, they did go up in tracking what the market was for our costs, but by the same token, as those costs came down in '10, '11, we dropped those rates by these amounts, 5.39 and 8%, 2% in fiscal year 12, and of course, there was no adjustment in 2013. These effectively net out, which means that you have a situation in Glendale where, here in 2014, you're paying largely the same type of costs as what you were paying back in fiscal year '07. I don't know about you, but it's very difficult to find anything that hasn't gone up in cost in that period of time, particularly energy. So those rate classes, you got residential to L1, small commercial and small apartment on a single meter, and L2 are medium commercial, and then these folks, the PC ones, that they're greater than 150 kilowatt hours and serve through one meter. Show you again what those look like, again, small, or the single-family residential, small commercial and, and small apartment, the medium commercial, and then the large user here. Just again, a summary. We talked a little bit about Prop 26. In the wake of Prop 13, a lot of cities started doing assessment districts to offset their costs. Prop 218 came and really invalidated, or not invalidated, but froze and disallowed future assessment districts unless they were increased and created by a vote of the people, but there were still loopholes within Prop 218 that were identified, so Prop 26 comes along, particularly focused on electric rates. Those were exempted out specifically under Prop 218. What we basically have to deal with and contend with from Prop 26 is that the rates have to be based on the cost to provide the service and that one set of customers can't subsidize another set of customers. In this slide, what you see is pretty, a pretty similar relationship with the rate and the cost causation. So this is the revenue at the current rates that we're pulling, this is the cost to provide the service. Prop 26 does allow you a reasonable spread between the two, but it is rather tight. I think the, the point here is that you're able to see that our costs, based on the cost of service study going forward, we are very closely tied together. This rate plan does allow us to achieve and maintain Prop 26 compliance. This is the same information, just on a bar chart, maybe a little bit easier to read. You could see the relationship between the revenue and the cost of service across all of these. The, the dynamic for our residents, this was a little bit hard to swallow at first. If you talk to any, especially homeowner, they will tell you that they're paying their property taxes, they're paying their income taxes, they're paying all of their taxes. You mean to tell me I'm not paying what equate to my fair share? And then at the end of the day, we had to explain and show this kind of chart to show, this is just the way that the system is structured and has been, and these relationships had been offset for many utilities, not just Glendale, but again, that was a way of doing business in California over the last 30 years. Here is a good--
Mr. Yao, I have a question about that. What about any comments about the conservation effort? Because I know there's a comment before about that. What if the customers reducing energy usage and the cost is still what it is for utility? How do you reconcile those two?
Well, we did, we faced that with the water utility. Folks were conserving, and so that was good because we had a shortage of water and the MWD rates were hugely expensive. The problem, though, is that our costs were largely fixed, and so we ended up restructuring the rate, as you may recall, so that we had folks paying the cost of maintaining the pipes in the ground and broke apart the cost of the commodity and the cost of the infrastructure. With the, and that resulted in some rather large increases for folks who had not experienced those charges before, but it's a much more elastic type of rate structure. On the, on the electric side, we largely are there, not entirely, but through the cost of service study, we don't have much that same dynamic. As indicated earlier, a lot of our fixed costs, you know, the lines overhead, that cost certainly we have to recover. The things that absolutely kill us on our, on our structure and on our finances are the cost of the renewables that we have to catch up on and the cost to actually purchase and have that energy, those contracts on demand. That does hurt us. The other elements in terms of the overhead lines, the investment in those lines, those are much more predictable. So we do have much more, and have had much more stability, much more predictability on the electric side than on the water side. We haven't had to go through a significant rate restructure, a revolutionary rate restructure on electrical as we did on water.
So is there a plan to maybe adjust that fixed adjustable combination so that people who are conserving can get the benefit?
I think we're there and now, sir, I'm sorry, I thought I was answering that question. I believe that we are there, especially with this, this five-year rate plan. If people continue to, to conserve, if people go solar and we want to help them do that, that actually is not going to have the same impact as conservation on the water side did. We have today a rate structure that allows for that type of elasticity based on the COSA, the cost of service analysis that's been done.
Is there a percentage of your fixed and variable charge? Was that in the presentation?
Not in this presentation, no. We can provide you with the COSA if you'd like, if, I'm trying to think, we probably, if we can get a copy, it's been finalized, and if you'd like, we can provide it to you today.
Okay, do you have like a top of your head what that was?
I do not, I'm sorry. No, I don't.
Okay, I was curious if you know.
This is a good depiction of the rates, both raw and compounded. So here you see the, the elements of that rate as they're compounded, one on top of the other, and this spread here speaks to the, the growth over just what would seem to be a simple calculation of that 2.2, the 5.5, and the 7.7, and the 8.8. Again, just wanted to make sure folks understand what it is that we are, we are asking for. In terms of system average rates, however, the, the more of the simple calculation, this will give you a good view as to where we are, fiscal year 13, fiscal year 14. You can see GWP is just a tick over the average at 15.2 cents per kilowatt hour, where Pasadena is at 15 cents per kilowatt hour. When you layer in what the utility user tax looks like, you can see what that adds in the various scenarios. I should point out that SCE's UUT is taken from the La Crescenta area because it's jurisdiction by jurisdiction, by jurisdiction, and some jurisdictions don't have a UUT. But we wanted to try and give you as best we can, the, give you the opportunity to do an apples-to-apples comparison. We use 500 kilowatt hours as a, as a benchmark for these types of comparisons, excluding PBC and taxes, but what you see here is that on the monthly residential, at 500 kilowatt, we are, even with the first year's rate increase in 2014, still the lowest of anyone else in our surrounding area, LADWP, Burbank, Riverside, Anaheim, Pasadena, and SCE. This is important to know because 659, we use 500 as a, as a benchmark. 659 is what the typical Glendale single-family residence uses on an annual basis, 659. What I'd like to draw your attention to is that here in 2013, you're paying 21, I think that's 21 cents, is that right? More than what you were paying back in '06, '07, even with the rate increase, at 112.32, you're paying less than what you were paying in '08, '09. This is, we, an explanation as to why we had the change in, in the fixed customer charge from 18 to 27 cents, but we also had a decrease in the fuel adjustment charges that I indicated earlier. When you talk about multifamily, an average multifamily is in 335 kilowatt hours, same type of relationship. Even with the proposed 13, 14 increase, you're still less than what you were in '08, '09, and only slightly above what you were in '07, '08. Same type of relationship here. When you talk about small commercial, 2,000 kilowatt hours, you could see where we are is nearer the, towards the, the lower half of where the, the average is, and we're doing pretty strong even with that increase for the coming fiscal year. And in real terms, with the average small monthly bill at 1,500, 261 versus what it was in '07, '08, at 260.45. Again, I think there is tremendous value for residential and commercial customers here in Glendale. Here, we had a 40, almost 43% increase in the fixed customer charge, up to 50 cents, so a large percentage increase, but small dollar increase and the reduction in the fuel adjustment charge. Now for the large guys, we're here right about at where the average is, 13,870, even with the fiscal year 2014 increase included. And where does that leave us when you look back? We are at 100,000 kilowatt hours. We're here pretty darn close, just below '07, '08 numbers. The land that time forgot in many respects because the cost of doing business is still frozen. You see here what the, the different charges are, similar to what you saw in the others. You got the, the low season, high season, that impacts the very large users and what those increase were, but then also the reduction in the fuel adjustment charge. What does it mean overall? Single-family residence is going to be paying $9.16 per month more than what they have been. Multifamily, on that service level, 14.64, $4.64, and on the low income, without any change, they're paying $3.65, $3.65, $3.65 more in that first year if this rate increase goes through. Again, looking at the, at the typical single-family residence, these are the various elements of our electric charges, the customer charge, the energy charge, and the fuel adjustment charge, which is today about, a little about, a little less than $450, very small layer on top surcharge for public benefits. What happens if we were to go forward with this rate increase? We have the marginal increase for that 8.8% on the single-family classification, but we basically collapse the fuel adjustment charge and this all be effectively reset the rates in this scenario, and have in our pro forma built-in increases for fuel charges, for regulatory charges, and if need be, if the, if the situation were to arise that a charge came forth that was not part of our pro forma, not estimated in that pro forma, then you might see the return of fuel adjustment charges, but at this point, you could see they're all, they are all down to zero, again, a reset. So this shows you what these rates are currently, that single-family residential is paying $103.15 per month. As you noted earlier, that would jump to 112, 121, 127, 30, and 133.70 by 2018. So Mr. Yao, or President Yao had raised the issue of the low-income discount. We have this here, as we did during the community outreach meetings, as a placeholder. It's at 10% currently. We're leaving it there for advice from this commission and from city council. As I say, I believe we can go as high as 12, 12.50 a month per account, or as suggested, perhaps we can look at some tiered structure, but that'd be something that we would want to take the requisite amount of time to make sure it's done accurately and it is done equitably as well.
I'm just curious about that. Is there budget-wise every year for low-income discounts, or is there just a, hey, whatever customers who sign up, we'll just get it and there's really no budget? really no budget?
There is a separate budget created for it. It is separate and apart. It will not go up by the same increase as the rates, is my understanding. Is that right? It is a, it is a budgeted pot that we have that is separate from the rate increase.
Right. I was curious to see if you actually looked at, let's say, zero out the low-income customer average monthly bill and then see what kind of scenario that would have an impact, like say slide 80, where you actually consider no changes to low-income customers because they're supposedly the worst off, that we want to increase the rate, but then recalibrate to see what the changes are for the other customer class.
President Yao, if I may, the public benefits charge is separate and apart from the rate increase. Due to Prop 26 considerations, we cannot allow one customer class to cross-subsidize the low-income customers. The public benefits charge is a pre-existing component of our rate structure and that will continue with the rate plan. The rate plan will not amend the public benefits charge. However, the public benefits charge is set by a budget, I believe annually or perhaps biannually, and it's within that mechanism that we can adjust the amount payable to different customers that fall under that rate.
So potentially every six months, we can have a change in the low-income discount rate?
Every year, every two years?
Intensively, I suppose you could, as directed and decided by council and as advised by this board. I mean, we do have some flexibility there because it is that separate charge.
Right, right. That's what I was going at, is not to change the, the rate plan here, but just to, as a study, look at the scenario where you actually determine what is the new discount would be to make sure that the low-income customers are the least impacted by this rate increase. So that if you zero the dollar value out just for study sake, and then you recalibrate to see if what actually happens to the overall rate plan.
So you're saying to, and I, correct, or, excuse me, for trying to paraphrase, I just want to make sure I fully understand. So you're saying, take this down to zero?
No, no, slide 80 down to zero. Because in slide 80--
Assume you don't raise rates on the low-income--
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then run a scenario where you figure out how much that would affect the rate case, and then you backfill the subsidy with that amount--
Right.
If I'm hearing--
I think that goes back to Ms. Godinez's issue is that you couldn't do that under Prop 26.
Right. But then you actually increase the public benefits charge based on your study on what that minimal impact would be to the low-income customers.
So if you were to do that, and I would defer the legal question to Ms. Godinez, if you were to do that, this sliver here would go up proportionally, right? Because you would be looking to increase that, that subsidy ultimately--
Right.
But separate apart from this rate.
Correct. I mean, just a scenario study to see what is the minimal impact and how much a percent increase to one customer class versus another. And just a background study so that you can understand what increase is necessary on the public benefits side to accommodate some of the less fortunate customers.
Studies most definitely we can do. Ultimately, the, the policy decision would come back to this body and to the council. But to the extent that that has impacts on rates, certainly. I mean, it's, it's ultimately how comfortable are the policymakers with making that policy? But we're happy to study that.
Well, thank you. At this point, there's no study has been done to--
Not to my knowledge, no.
We're keeping it being the same for low-income customers. So we can just do some basic analysis so that council can consider at least some kind of an increase to the public benefits charge. That'll be helpful, at least to minimize the impact to low-income customers.
And please indulge me for a sec. I want to go back to something that Commissioner Hale had brought up with respect to conservation. Now, we do have a decoupling charge. So that allows you to, to capture, if our revenue estimates are so completely off, this can be increased to make up that difference. But I think we'd have to use that similarly, very, very judiciously, as opposed to doing it, you know, wantonly, just to make up for bad prognostication on our part. Okay. We're almost to the end, I promise. Take all of your questions again. All right. So you see the average bill, discount program. Okay. Did we miss one? Okay. So as said at the beginning, you know, this is, this is a solid utility, a very dynamic utility at the forefront of a number of important endeavors in this particular industry. Our revenue is stagnant. You know, we made those choices, now we're living with those choices, and one of those consequences is a rate program, a rate plan. It hasn't been arrived at easily or in judiciously, and in fact, we've looked under all the different rocks trying to find reductions that are suitable for the overall organization, up to and including a reduction in the transfer, management reorganization, reduction in personnel, and increasing employee contributions for the cost of employment, consolidating, and cutting back in the budget. We do see this as an essential rate program. We had flexibility last year. I don't know that we have that same level of flexibility this year. In fact, when we elected not to move forward with the rate plan last year, we effectively sowed the seeds that we need to do something in fiscal year 2014 or seriously consider getting out of the, the utility business, certainly the electric utility business. Conversely, we have the opportunity to heal in very comprehensive and exhaustive ways by way of this rate program. And when you consider what the impact has been for our customers, both residential and commercial, I think you can see that we still deliver considerable value, bringing folks to a standard in terms of what the economic impact is to them, that is still within the range of what they were paying several years ago. We will reset the fuel adjustment charge. And I think we've demonstrated that, that adjustment charge, while it can go up, it most certainly can go down, and that's a demonstration of GWP's good faith to the rate payers. We know that we have ongoing and new costs that are going to come upon us that will impact the rates. So as I say, the idea that we can simply do nothing is not a real one at all. We will, at this point, make all of the efforts as required by state law to, to enhance the RPS and, at that point, be a green utility, be a cost-effective utility, and one that is also financially viable and healthy. So with that, we have a host of staff here who have been taking down notes and questions from the commission. But I would throw it back to you, President, now, if there's anything that you want to start off in terms of discussion, or we can bring staff up to address a couple of the things that have been raised.
Well, I'm sure the commissioner had various questions as you went along your presentation, so I can start off with each commissioner's questions, and then you and all staff can address them individually so we can have a process. So who would like to go first?
I just have one minor one, yes. I want to thank you for this detailed presentation. I do remember the exercise you went through last year. It was multi-year, if I remember correctly. I think it was four, four years. So it's, it's, it's great to see all of the details that you have provided. The information here covered a lot of the concerns that we had last year. I, I think it's, it's great that everything is outlined here and we're seeing clearly where everything is going to go into and why we need these increases. I just have a very minor question. In one of your last slides on summary, where you cover cost reductions and contributions, I really appreciate all of the efforts that you and, and staff have done on reducing costs. Number four bullet, employee contributions. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes. As part of the imposition on IBW, we brought them to the same standard as our general employees group in terms of the purse contribution. They had been paying, I'm sorry, Bob always has to correct me, there's a pay cut. We imposed a pay cut equivalent to what the contribution level is for those other groups. So if you think of GCA at, what's their, they're at 3%, and managers are at, managers are at 3% as well. The IBW bargaining group, after they had split off from GCA, was not willing to increase to that same level. And that's something that the city council, as a matter of policy, felt that we needed to have parity among the different bargaining groups, so everybody was contributing something. Police and fire are a part of this system. In fact, fire is due to continue increasing its contributions back. We had hoped that IBW would agree to the cost sharing. It's better for their members, quite frankly, because it preserves their hourly rate such that their overtime isn't impacted or specialty pays aren't impacted. They elected not to, and the council imposed on them. The imposition was a pay cut of 1.5% or 1.5?
So it was a pay cut of 1.5% across the board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Comac.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and the presentation. Good information. I have a question and then a couple of comments. So on the question, one of your slide, in one of your slides, you indicate the staff reductions that were done to full-time positions. So there, I would just wonder the extent to which GWP uses contract or part-time employees? Because I can imagine that if you watch one, that the other might rise. That is, I would be concerned about monitoring contractors to make sure that you don't replace full-time workers with contract workers.
Absolutely. You can rest assured that IBW is not allowing us to ignore any of those types of opportunities as they seem. In fact, we are currently meeting and conferring over some underground construction that we wouldn't have done anyway, but they felt they had a right to. Because one of the, the reorganization, one of the cuts was to eliminate the underground crew. But in this particular instance, it was under a railroad right-of-way. So point very well taken. We are very keen to that, whether we want to be or not.
And then a couple of comments, or perhaps suggestions. One is, especially for residents, residential consumers, it seems to me that the data, some of the data that you have at the back of the, the presentation currently about the system average rates and the amount per monthly bill that we're talking about, the proposed increase represents, that that would be helpful context summarized somewhere early in the presentation. Because I, my, my view is that that is easier for people to relate to versus the early part of the presentation, you focus on percentages. And especially the relative rate, I thought that was a very helpful slide toward the end. The relative rates compared to other local utilities, I thought that was helpful. So I think having that earlier in the presentation summarized in some form would be helpful. And then final, final comment from, from my perspective would be, you, you mentioned in a couple of different portions of the presentation, the transfer. And especially with the FAQ, it was apparently a theme that you heard when you went out and spoke to the community, which is good feedback to have. There, it seems to me that that information might be helpful in the introduction. So in the, in the introduction, you talk about a number of issues that really are discreet, but they're related. And that, to my mind, certainly as a resident of Glendale, just anecdotally seems to be a area of question. So it seems that addressing that early on is, is an opportunity. And, and then to that point, this might be best to keep as in part of a Q and A, but my understanding is that the city attorney has produced an opinion. So you stated earlier in your presentation that the approach that we take with the, with the transfer is consistent with the charter. So that is, that's been reinforced through the city attorney's office, is my understanding.
Yes.
Correct.
Very much so.
Those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Jamien.
Thank you again for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. I think maybe a little bit of a discussion about Pago in general, or more explanation in detail, I think one of the questions that the general consumer had was, will the rates increase again? You know, part of the reason why we're implementing Pago is so that in the future, we don't have these types of shocks. I want to understand how Pago gets funded, kind of after the five year, after the five years, what the rate increases will mean. Will that, you know, be enough to add to Pago on a general-going basis so that we don't have that shock in the future? That's one, one question. Two, can you talk a little bit more about the modernization line item? It's a fairly, fairly large line item. That was, I think, in the, in the overall budget. What it includes, I'm sure a large part of it is for the smart grid, but I want to see if it is, is it all for the smart grid or are there other components that we're not aware of? Let's see, what else? And then three, maybe a smaller question was, you mentioned that a lot of various city facilities were either consolidated or there were certain services that were removed and certain, you know, leases that were gotten out of. Just want to make sure that the, the, the water and power is being compensated for the locations or the services providing to the city, for example. I believe there was some discussion in the past couple of years where certain expenses or certain electrical charges were not being charged to the city according to general rates and whatnot. And I want to make sure that all those, you know, if, if the GWP is being compensated properly for those charges or facility locations or fleet or customer support staff, for example, when it's, when it's training other, you know, for other apartments, whether all those charges are somehow being, or somehow coming back to the, to, to water and power. I think that's it.
Why don't I have Mr. Blake get up to talk about modernization? Or Steve, do you want to? Okay. And then we'll go from there.
Mr. President, members of the commission, Steve Wenz, Chief Assistant Room Manager. Modernization is much broader than just the digital meter program. We have only about $6 million left to spend on our Department of Energy smart grid contract obligation. The rest of it goes beyond that original scope to things like distribution automation and computer systems to back up the system. So it's way beyond the scope of just the, the digital meters.
And in that 11 million that was outlined over the fiber plan, is that 6 million?
The 6 million is included in that, and then beyond that, it's got some distribution automation and various other modernization projects.
Okay.
The, couldn't find the slide, and there's a lot of stuff on this particular slide. The, the question about funding Pago, the idea for us is in this, in this first period here, 14, 15, and 16, we would be using bond proceeds to do those first three years worth, and actually, well, 16, 17, first three years, three and a half years' worth of capital investment. When we get over here to 17 and going forward, our plan is to be able to, to budget about $30 million per year on a going-forward basis to do capital replacement. And so the remaining $40 million in that current estimated spectrum of, of capital investment, the last portion of that, the last $40 million would be done entirely by Pago, beginning in 17, 18, probably stretching out into 19, 20. But the idea is to get there, and at this point, you just don't have the reserves to do it. The, the bond gives you the opportunity to restore reserves, restore the net income such that you can afford to do that $30 million Pago on a going-forward basis. So that would be something that would come back to this body on an annual budget basis to say, you know, which, which infrastructure do we place this current year? There was a time, and, you know, you look back here and even before 2010, when the money was not the issue for GWP. We had any number, we had well more than $150 million, and as you recall, was be able to pick and choose between the projects that you wanted to fund. Our goal is to get to, start to approach that level again and maybe more closely link capital investment with revenue generated. The question on consolidation, certainly at this point, city attorney's office has reviewed the consolidations that we're doing, and under the cost of service analysis, we have been able to identify everything that is, that is an outflow-- have been able to identify everything that is an outflow from GWP and everything that should be an inflow to GWP by way of interaction with all the other city departments. So I think we feel pretty good about having a good accounting and understanding of GWP's outlay to the rest of the organization and vice versa. We can continue to explore that, but I think probably as much as anything else, we'd either have the city auditor or city attorney's office make that presentation to you, if that's something you'd like to see.
Scott, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of last observations. You know, we had a discussion briefly with regards to the low-income customers and how we can sort of soften the blow of a rate increase. But I think that, you know, one of the means of doing that is, applies evenly to all rate classes, and that's energy efficiency. And while we're asking for our rate payers to pay more, we also make an investment in them and make programs available to them to offset that rate increase by reducing their own consumption. And I don't, we need to do that in a thoughtful way where you don't get trapped in that no-man's land where you start collapsing your revenue base, but you still can't turn off the turbines. So I think a little bit of thoughtfulness into that approach of really including energy efficiency as part of the whole portfolio of resources would be a good thing. And then, Scott, you mentioned that we had some contracts that are not really cost-based, and we have to pay the amount that we have to pay for those contracts in order to provide power. And all of our contracts going forward should really be cost-based, and we should be paying for the electrons that we're consuming, not paying for the contract, to the extent possible. And maybe we don't have the market leverage to do that, but as we, you know, go into procurement processes, I'd like to see us sort of move in that direction as well.
Yes, sir.
I've been emailed and texted several times from staff, the reduction on IBW is 1.75, not 1.5.
Thanks, Scott. So I just have a few follow-up questions, because I know my perspective might be different than other commissioners', because I do like the Pago system. However, I understand that some residential customers, or at least some customers in general, would prefer that they have a low rate now and spread that cost over time. So typically, I prefer some kind of leverage to certain investments, so that we can have a long-term payment, so that we don't have a significant rate impact to the current customers. Because as you invest in infrastructure, I mean, that cost should be shared for current customers as well, future customers. So that's just my perspective, if that's being considered. I'm not sure what the actual debt-to-equity ratio should be. I know the early utilities have certain limits that they have, maybe 50/50 or 40/60, but it's something that I think all utilities should follow, so that all customers pay for the infrastructures or pay for the investments over time, rather than putting everything on the current customers. The other thing, like I mentioned before, was the fixed versus variable charge. If you can discuss that in future meetings with the city council, so they can understand that the percentage between the fixed and variable, so that customers also know that what impact they have on the variable charge. I know that sometimes fixed can be a high percentage of it, but some utilities have all variable costs, so that customers who do conserve, as Mr. Hale mentioned, that conservation is a key component in future rate considerations, so that people who do conserve and make their homes as energy efficient as possible, they get the benefit of that variable charge, so they can reduce the overall rate. And then the other item I mentioned before was the low-income customers. If you can show that in future council meeting, the different scenarios that it would take to minimize the impact to low-income customers for their consideration, that'd be very helpful, because I think they want options. And I understand that in council consideration, you present the staff option, as well as no option, if they don't do anything, as well as maybe different options for their consideration. So I would like to have at least one option where it minimizes the impact to low-income customers as an option for them to consider. And then I'm curious, if you can elaborate on some of the changes that staff or yourself has made due to public outreach, community events? Were there any, because of Q and A or because of the discussion involved? Did you make any changes or factor into consideration, certain things that maybe turned on the light bulb in your head?
A couple of things that stand out, certainly in my mind, and speak back to Commissioner Camargo's comments. The notion of the discussion on the transfer, it's the elephant in the room, for better or for worse. And I found that as we would break out into smaller subgroups, so that folks could, you know, from the larger, you know, presentation down to small groups, that could go to the rate calculator, could go talk to business folks about their needs, ultimately, people wanted to talk about that transfer and understand what it was and what it wasn't. So to the extent that you see, and I've talked about that transfer, is really an outgrowth of what we experienced in the community outreach meetings. You know, people want to know what it is and what it isn't, because they hear all kinds of things. And when you can put it in terms that they can relate to, and then folks say, okay, I get it, I'm willing to support it, especially when they know what the historical dynamic is and what the legislative intent behind it has been. The other thing also brought up was, what does this mean to me? You know, we would use the 500 kilowatt-hour benchmark, that way we could compare apples to apples with other utilities. But if the single-family residence is using 659, then we ought to be showing 659, and show me what it was looking back before all this started. Because if part of the narrative from the city is that we haven't had rate increases, base rate increases from that five-year period, well, it doesn't mean anything that we want to increase rates 8.8% on the single-family residence in 2014. It doesn't mean anything unless you know what you were paying before, because that way you get some relativity between these things. That and discussion on the fuel adjustment charge, and the fact that while it went up, I think cynically, people believe that once there's a charge, it only goes up, and that door never swings the other way. Being able to show that are those, you know, two things, the rates and the transfer, and breaking those down to more tangible types of concepts, were the things that really came out of that process.
Was there any convincing on the public's part on what rate percentage would be, besides the one that staff has proposed? I mean, of course, they would like to go down.
Sure.
Have less, but were there any compelling argument on why it should be maybe a fixed 3%, 2% or 3% every year versus a high, and then over five years, rather than over 10 years?
You know, it's interesting. I think when folks were talking about, you know, the rate being too high, yet when they had to acknowledge that the rate, the base rate hadn't increased in that intervening time, and if you start with the premise that, well, would you be here for a 2.4% increase? Well, no, I wouldn't be here for a 2.4% increase. Oftentimes, 90% of the time was the response. And you can show them, well, it was zero here on the base rate, and it's 24 over the coming years. Again, it tends to put it in perspective. To the extent that we had, I think it was four successive six-year rate increases last year, and folks really didn't like that, especially in the out-years. They could kind of wrap their heads around, you know, the upfront years. You know, that, we were able to come and show them good faith by the two-year increases in the out-years. That seemed to make a difference for some folks. Well, we heard a lot from the businesses, less from the residents ironically enough, because they could start to understand what the impact was on the rest of the city, but the businesses seemed to have just the strongest taste for 8%. That's what we took away, 8% is just too darn high, which kind of spoke to this notion of, well, okay, well, is 7.5% enough, or, you know, 7.75, or 7.25, or, you know, what's that number? Because you know that number is something that has to be sufficiently high to support the bond and restore the net operating income. The good news in talking with businesses, as they understand the business equation, it got to a point by the end, I know they're representatives of these different constituencies here today, I think folks were, I don't want to say resigned, but at least they understood. You know, they didn't like it, but it kind of was what it was. And while we can look back and say, well, we should have been doing 2% increases during the course of the Great Recession, it is admittedly easy to say that now, because the council wrestled with it that entire five-year period.
Well, no, I only have one speaker card, but...
I have one more question, I'm sorry. Yeah, going back to the transfer. I noticed in here, you indicated $250,000 reduction in year 1213 and then 1314. This is a five-year rate increase proposal, so I was just wondering if you've ever thought about the subsequent years? Is there going to be similar amount of reduction?
The five-year financial forecast we gave to the council showed a glide down of $250,000 a year till we got to 9% of operating income, net operating revenue from GWP, and then locking it there at that level. So that would mean several more successive years of $250,000 reduction. That seems to be in line with where other, it's all over the map, but at least it's within the range. That's where I think we'd like to be, certainly as we go out and do economic development. We understand that the cost of doing business here, a lot of that is driven by utility charges. So our plan is to get down to that number.
Okay, 9%. Okay, thank you.
It's worth noting that, if I can, just our own little plug, we're, if you look at GWP, water and power, I think we're at 9.6% of operating revenue. The higher amount, I think it's 11%, is at the electric level. And when we showed that to city council, and they said, well, we don't transfer water operating revenue any longer, we haven't done that since 2010, after the Big Horn decision was published and adjudicated. The point was that we have a number of our competitors that we compare rates with, in fact, do transfer water revenues, and will continue to do that until they're challenged. So as a water and power utility, we're already well within that range, but the council's making that policy decision to say, okay, we understand what the world is doing, we still want to chart our own course and get that as low as we can.
Well, let me go to the public before we see the video, so that we can have some time to think about that and discuss. So let me start with Taylor Malakian.
President Yao, before you call up members of the public, I want to make sure that for the members of the public who are here, that they're aware that they would need to submit a card for this item. We do have oral communications, but if anyone wishes to speak on the rate item, they should submit a card for this, rather than for oral communications.
Yes, let me reiterate too. If you want to speak on this specific rate plan, submit your request to speak now, because once we go to the oral communication, you can't speak on this agenda item at all. Is that correct?
That's correct, thank you.
So so far, we have three requests to speak publicly. And considering the time, I'll give each person five minutes. I think we can accommodate these three speakers. Can I have first, Talara Malakian, please?
Good evening, President Yao, Commissioners, City Manager, General Manager, and City Staff. Since July 5, 2013, the Armenian National Committee of America Glendale Chapter hosted an online survey regarding the Glendale Water and Power electrical rate increases in the city. The survey was intended to both educate community members regarding the proposed increases, as well as to allow for their feedback. The survey was conducted in public areas such as the parks, Glendale Community College, the Americana, community events, and through submissions electronically. We assembled two separate surveys. One of the two surveys was intended to collect the public opinion of various types of businesses, while the second survey collected the responses from residents. Over 35% of the businesses and over 55% of the residents who responded were unaware of the increases before they completed the survey. Further, the results show that the community overwhelmingly rejects the proposed rates because many feel that they are too high. An average of 88.1% of people that took the survey do not support this rate of an increase for the reasons mentioned by Glendale Water and Power Online. Many of the businesses commented that they are barely able to pay their rents, while some even commented that with rate hikes such as these, they would have to close or lay off some of their staff eventually. In the same way, many residents mentioned that they are struggling and that the rationale behind the proposed rates has not been made clear. The ANCA Glendale directed all those surveyed to the Glendale Water and Power website for more information. The current findings have suggested to us that the Glendale community strongly opposes the increase of electrical rates by the currently suggested percentages. The ANCA Glendale feels also that the rates are too high for the community, and that the Glendale Water and Power should consider revisiting their options so that our businesses and our residents can continue to work and live in Glendale without feeling yet another rate increase thrust upon them. We support the Glendale Water and Power's decision to modernize its infrastructure and meet state mandates. However, the ANCA Glendale feels those financial needs can be met through other means and other considerations, as do the current responses from the Glendale community. The ANCA Glendale is open and willing to work with the Glendale Water and Power and city government authorities on more acceptable alternatives. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beric Karpetian. I'm the Chairman of the Armenian National Committee. So I'll use the balance of the time.
Okay, so you want to use the balance of time and then additional five minutes?
Yeah, I thought she would go more than five minutes. Use the balance. I would hope that, I want to go ahead and thank the city manager, the staff, for the meeting that they had with us, and for the explanations that they've given, for the outreach that they did to the community, and in terms, trying to educate individuals in terms of the need and what, how this would translate to each one of them. However, we feel that we've seen most individuals are still, after knowing what the rates are after the explanations, once they're finding out, they're still finding these rates of 29.9% approximately on cumulative basis compounded for residential L1 and for the businesses as being too high of an amount. So I would hope that maybe you can, since this is coming back to you, look at the possibility of, the issue of the total revenue needs of next five years of 164.9 million, possibly there is a way of scaling that back, and therefore reducing the amount of the increases, and possibly doing the increases over a seven-year period, rather than a five-year period, trying to reduce the amount of the increase. I understand there is a desire to get that $60 million bond, and there will be a need to satisfy or to service the debt on that bond. However, we hope that you would consider looking at those things. We are prepared, as Talara mentioned, to continue having meetings with the staff and exploring possibilities. And I would like to leave you with one thought. Over the last six years since 2007, the revenue has been 1.26 billion. The expenses have been 1.98 billion, gives a net of 128 million. And 114 million has gone in terms of transfers to the city. So it's not that the revenue over the last six years has gone negative, it has gone, left a positive revenue, even with the transfer, there is still money. I do not have the figures for last year from the auditor's report, but I hope those are things that can also be part of the discussions when it gets to city council. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's, next would be Laura Alhassol. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Good evening. Laura Alhassol, I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Glendale Association of Realtors, many of whom are residents of Glendale, many of whom own business in Glendale, and many do both, both live and own businesses here. We have not had the opportunity to have a presentation to our association, but we do have one scheduled in the near future. But we've had a discussion, a fairly informed discussion, I attended one of GWP's outreach meetings. We have two problems. First of all, we understand that there's a need. We understand that we are paying for political decisions that have been made over the past years. But we also understand that there is a very fragile economic recovery. And we would ask this body to look at the idea of backloading instead of front-loading these increases, so that your, A, your compounded dollar amount is actually less, because you're not adding as much, and that with the backloading, that you actually will allow that economic recovery to get better than it has been. If you look at slide number 20 that Scott was showing, it's a very sharp and steep rate of recovery for GWP. And is that necessary? And the gentleman before me, is this something that could be smoothed over seven years or eight years, instead of this five-year sharp rate of recovery? And I think that that would be something that you guys would like to talk about. The second problem we have is the fact that we're in this mess. And we would really like you to look at and discuss a policy to recommend to the council, so that there's a policy of a given increase every year, whether that's a half a percent increase, or a 5% increase, or a 2% increase, or a CPI increase, whatever... increase or a 5% increase or a 2% increase or a CPI increase, whatever it is, so that we aren't faced with this same kind of dilemma in the future. Because at city council, we understand city councils are political animals and nobody wants to raise taxes or fees like this. But if there is a policy that GWP continues to bring in and increase its costs by what its costs are, increase its fees, then it would seem that that smoothing out of those fees that are passed on to the public is a much better policy for this city than what we've been doing in the future, in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next and last speaker, unless anyone else has any cards, would be Judy Kendall.
President Yao, members of the coalition, my name is Judy Kendall. I'm with the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. And our Board of Directors has taken a position through a rather lengthy process and we really appreciate the outreach from Mr. Zern and the entire management staff of Glendale Water and Power. I think they've made a -- we all feel they've made a great effort in communicating their needs and helping us understand why a rate increase is -- or why they feel a rate increase is necessary. However, we have taken a position opposing the electricity rates as proposed. And I believe you all have a copy of a letter that I've sent to Acting Manager John Tuktalian. The Chamber would support, however, a moderate, consistent rate structure that provides stability and accountability, reestablishing trust in the utility and conditional to the following: that GWP maintains cash reserves below that currently proposed, however sufficient to meet emergencies and maintaining a stable bond rating or better. And that GWP produces an annual accountability report to be reviewed by city council. This report would demonstrate how accurately customer rates are conforming to approved rate structure and that business representation by commercial energy managers experienced in finance be included in the GWP Commission and all appropriate other committees. And that GWP maintains continued reliability per American Public Power Association standards. That GWP complies with all regulations and legislations to prevent monetary penalties. That GWP uses funded funds already allocated to produce a cost-benefit analysis regarding options for the Grayson Power Plant facility. And that the city commits to an economic strategy without a business license tax. The Chamber is really -- would be happy to discuss this further with city council, GWP, and anyone who wants to talk with us. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Any follow-up questions or commissioners have any more questions? If not, we can watch the video that we've been waiting anxiously for.
Now it's been built up too much.
Glendale Water and Power proudly provides safe and reliable utility services to nearly 200,000 residents and businesses of Glendale. In 1909, the Glendale Power and Light Company was purchased as a means to save money, generate municipal revenue, and provide Glendale residents a reliable source of energy. Providing local energy meant local money stayed local instead of going to big electric company stakeholders. Investing in Glendale Water and Power also meant having a consistent source of revenue for general city services like public safety, parks, and libraries, even amid federal and state budget cuts. As the city grew, investments in newer sources of energy were made to meet the increasing demands of residents and businesses. In 1937, Glendale invested in Hoover Dam, becoming one of the first cities in California to supply customers with renewable energy. Soon thereafter, the Grayson Power Plant was constructed and began operations in 1941. Through the years, GWP has tripled the generating capacity of the plant, allowing it to keep the city running, especially in times of storms and other natural disasters. Since 2005, GWP has invested more than $100 million to modernize its operations and infrastructure. Glendale's self-reliant power resources guarantee fewer and shorter power outages than neighboring cities, keeping our customers' busy lives up and running. Today, your utility is already thinking ahead to the next 100 years. To reduce our reliance on fossil fuels, we have made investments in new sources of clean, renewable energy such as solar, wind, small hydro, and geothermal. Currently, 20% power generation is from renewable resources and are on track to expanding the renewable portfolio to over 30% by 2020. A recent example of this effort is the use of the naturally-produced methane gas from the Shoal Canyon landfill as a renewable fuel for the Grayson Power Plant as well as a source of revenue for the city. Glendale Water and Power is a leader in the utility industry. Along with aggressive conservation efforts, GWP has been giving back to the community through its public benefit programs. These programs assist low-income customers with their electric bills and educate all customers on new technologies that can help save money and lower energy and water consumption. Having received $21 million in state and federal grant funding, Glendale Water and Power embarked on a new modernization project. This includes updating to new state-of-the-art electric and water digital meters and transforming the distribution system to improve reliability and reduce costs. Your local utility is committed to reducing its reliance on purchased water and continuously looks for new groundwater resources. The latest discovery, the Foothill Well, is producing over 200 gallons a minute of local groundwater. GWP is a pioneer in the removal of chromium 6 from groundwater supplies. Glendale's testing facility is conducting the research that will be the foundation on which industry guidelines will be established. Growing from a utility that once served a mere 200 customers to 85,000 today, Glendale Water and Power has continued to grow and improve to meet the demands of a thriving, dynamic city. Our dedicated staff is committed to maintaining our existing infrastructure and making smart investments to best serve our customers now and in the future. Glendale Water and Power, building today for a stronger tomorrow.
I would only underscore a couple of things. Actually, in the last 18 months working here, I have come to absolutely love Glendale. To the extent that we have good and incisive commentary from folks that are community partners, you know, like the ANCA, like the Chamber, like the Association of Realtors, and lots of other folks, it really is refreshing to see folks that want to talk substantively about what has happened with GWP and what we want to see happen with GWP. I can tell you that the council, while a policymaking body, is not a body devoid of common sense. To the extent that you saw an unprecedented economic drop in all various sectors of our local economy through the Great Recession, the idea that the council would not make rate increases a top priority during that environment, I would argue is not being political. That's being empathetic and sensitive. Much of what you've heard today could likely be said several years ago, just changed the date and time and the amounts being discussed. To the extent that nobody likes to see a rate increase, and I would bet dollars to donuts, folks would have liked to see a rate increase much less than, especially with the benefit of hindsight, than what it is that we're talking about today. And so I want to make sure that the council is seen in the appropriate light, that their action was taken ostensibly to make sure that they weren't adding to the burden at a time that was unprecedentedly bad, and now we have to catch up. So we can talk about how we catch up, and I think you've heard some suggestions here, but I would submit to you that the composite of all of those suggestions have been thrown against the wall to see ultimately what sticks. And if we are looking to restore even reserve levels approaching what has been approved, if we are looking to invest in infrastructure such that we can pay one cost to make those investments in repairs today and something substantially more if we push it off down the road, and if we are looking to make sure that we're in alignment with the surrounding region for the cost of providing that service, well, then that's the plan that we've put out. I would submit to you that folks did not like the plan that was submitted last year, which was at a lower rate because it wasn't a good time then to do such a rate increase. And I would submit to you, it's probably never going to be a really good time to do that kind of rate increase, especially to catch up. So I appreciate the comments that were made. I truly do. And the fact that folks want to talk and are willing to talk in very honest and open ways, but I want to make sure that you know that the council did what the council thought was right for the right reason. You certainly can argue that as staff, as management, we overextended by not stopping the infrastructure replacement program and continuing to stretch as opposed to holding back when the revenues were being held back. I think that's absolutely fair. But I would submit to you that we have reestablished and reorganized that management staff and leadership of the utility. And while we really can't cry over the spilt milk, I can give you my assurances, my dead level best, that we will not make that same mistake twice, but we are where we are. I just want to make sure that the commission knows that, especially considering that we have new commissioners as well.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Choa. But for next steps on this rate plan, I know that you have your proposed rate increase and as we discussed previously, that there'll be options for the council to consider. One of them is no rate increase, a status quo, but what -- and everything else in between. So I would like this commission maybe to have some opportunities to discuss those different options. I mean, do we accept what staff's proposing as this 87522, or do we propose something else as more palatable based on public comment, based on staff feedback, and based on what this commission thinks is more appropriate for council to consider? I mean, they can always consider what staff is proposing, or they can consider other options. Any other input from the commission on what those options would be?
When -- what is the next step on sort of a macro level? That is, when will the city council address this potential increase?
We are bringing this to council on the 6th of August. If -- it would be done by ordinance, so they would hear the matter on the 6th and vote on it presumably on the 13th of August.
And then our next commission meeting is on August 5th, right one day before council meets to consider this. So potentially in the past, like the water rate proposal, this commission actually made a motion and a recommendation to the city council to adopt, as I recall, staff's recommendation to increase the water rate by some percentage over the years that it was encompassing. So this body, I think, has that flexibility to make that same recommendation as a motion. Unfortunately, we're running up to that August 6 deadline, so potentially any motion that's made today, as my understanding is, that it can't be considered until the next meeting so that we can discuss and debate on what is the appropriate recommendation to council the following day.
Or the alternative would be to just simply provide feedback that we would take back to council and do our best to incorporate that into the agenda report. But certainly, it's the commission's pleasure and we can do either. I would submit to you that lowering the front-end rates, you know, go from eight down to seven or six, and go from the second year's proposed increase from seven down to six or to five or whatever pleasure you might have, would not come without an asking price. And that asking price would either be to lower the reserve levels or, and/or, to shrink the amount of the bond issue for infrastructure replacement. It's going to be one or the other or some combination thereof, but there is no responsible way, actually no practical way, I think, of reducing the front-end rates without it reverberating in one of those two areas. And in all likelihood, considering the financial model we're exploring, returning the reserves back to the level we want to see wouldn't happen towards the end of this anyway. So you're not really, by shrinking the front-end requirement, you're really talking about reducing perhaps significantly the bond issue.
So Mr. Choa, I'm just curious, what kind of options would you present to council at the August 6 meeting? I mean, is it just the two option, this proposed rate increase, or status quo, do nothing? Or what other options are you presenting to them?
I appreciate the question certainly because it's -- we're at that point with this question and with the utility. From the context that we walked down this road last year with a series of 6% options that was not put forward, our recommendation is to move forward with the 87522 plan. Because we had foregone the 6666 last year, we need to have a higher-end upfront cost. So by way of alternative, if we got feedback from this group that the overall -- well, whatever feedback we got from the commission, we would present to council as such. If the council opted to go to a shorter-term increase to 3% or three-year increase, rather, not a five-year increase, but a three-year increase, we would present that to them as an option. I don't think going to a six- or seven- or eight-year increase does any good in the real world because, you know, it's hard enough to predict what's going to happen 24 months out, let alone 60 months out or, you know, 72 months out. So I think we would either go with what's proposed, go with the status quo, go with a shorter-term rate increase, 875, or if this commission is recommending that you adjust, that the council adjusts the front end of those, of that rate plan, it would be with the understanding that that is, that means that you have to reduce the amount of the bond issue on the front end and the rate or the reserve on the back end. But what those numbers are, we likely at that point would be back in front of you in September and council in September as well.
Well, my -- unless there's anyone else, my own suggestion, as I mentioned before, is to minimize the impact to our low-income customers who are at least able to afford this rate impact. So if you can do the study, I mean, I don't mind leaving the proposed rate increase the way it is, but do your analysis so that council can see what that additional public benefits charge would be if we were to keep the least impact to low-income customers so that there's a rate increase, but add the public benefits charge to make low-income customers whole again. So if council can see that option, that'll be helpful. Right. Any other comments or feedback?
Yeah, I think I'd like to see the scenario with the 875 proposal and then maybe revisit in a year or two this additional 4% over two years. Because given the unpredictable nature of the economy and given the unpredictable nature of what happens in those rate scenarios, it may be a better idea to not do a five-year rate increase, but a shorter-term rate increase that gives you the sort of funding capacity that you need to go to the rating agencies and go out and get bonds to fund necessary infrastructure. But you also avoid the compounding problem, so it actually becomes a true 25% increase rather than that 29.1.
I echo that same, those thoughts, especially if you look at the financials, you see by, you know, year three, you're kind of, your reserves are already high where they need to be, your net income is already there. Your, you know, your fourth and fifth-year increases don't really do much on an overall scale. So I would echo those thoughts by our fellow commissioner here.
I'd also like to see a comparison of our next discussion of the reserve policies between GWP, Burbank, LA, some of our neighboring public power utilities and find out what kind of what, as a proportion of the total revenue base, what the cash reserves are for the utility currently.
He had a comment.
Yeah, while I understand that this is absolutely critical and, you know, for the financial stability of the utility, I would like to see the scenario where, the one that you suggested earlier, like dropping by 1%. one that you suggested earlier, like dropping by 1% the first two years, and then adding them on at the end.
Keeping it five years.
Right, keeping it five years, instead of the 875, go down to 765.
76533.
33, yeah.
I support the concept of viewing some additional options. I mean, at this stage, I think the beginning game plan was the do-nothing or the 87522. So I definitely support the idea of reviewing some options. I suppose it's on the next meeting of this body.
But to consider that, we need to express what we want to look at for our next meeting so that staff can...
Maybe I can suggest then that what is agendized is action on what sounds like three different options. An option that, well, four really. The no-project, no-plan option, the option as, or the alternative as recommended, alternative as shrinking down to 76533, and then the option of 875, or just 875, just the three-year plan. I mean, all those certainly can be provided, and provided by the fifth, and I want to say this the wrong way, whatever the commission would give by way of input, just based on this discussion alone, it makes its way into the council report, such that if the commission is willing and wanting to consider that range of options, we would include that range of options in the council report on the 6th. Does that make sense?
No, it does make sense, but I was curious to see if this commission can at least recommend one option so that staff can say that the Glendale Water and Power Commission proposed we adopt this one, rather than laying out five different options.
President Yao, to respond to your question, that would be something that we would need to address at the August 5 meeting, because then we would agendize it as an action item.
Right, right. So discuss the options that we laid out, so staff can go back and present it on August 5. But for this meeting, we need to at least put in process a, some kind of recommendation in form of a motion, so that in August 5, we can decide which option to adopt.
Not necessarily. We have, as we discussed last time, the agenda-setting process. So as long as we have at least two commissioners that are interested in having this considered at the next meeting, and we do have feedback from each of you now on what you'd like to see as a potential proposal, we can fold that into our discussion so that you'll have all those options presented to you on August 5.
And then can a formal motion to recommend to the citizens' council to adopt one particular option be at the August 5 meeting?
Absolutely. We would agendize this as an action item for you to present your recommendation formally.
Featuring all of those options in the agenda report to council.
Correct.
Okay. That's fair enough. Is that agreeable, everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so by August 5, which I won't be here, but I'll provide my comment and feedback to staff beforehand, so that Ms. Chan can take the meeting, and if it's a quorum, then the vote can be made at the August 5 meeting to adopt whatever option this commission desires to recommend to the City Council.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comment before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Choa. Great presentation. Looking forward to the discussions. Next item, please.
Three, oral communications.
I have no other cards with me on that subject, so that closes. Next item, please.
Four, agenda forecast.
The next meeting is August 5, which will continue the discussion on the electric rate plan. I'm not sure if that's on there.
No, it's not.
Yes, so it will be on there. Thank you. Electric rate plan, action item.
You know, I emailed Gloria earlier. September 2nd, is that a holiday for Glendale staff or no? It's Labor Day.
That is, that is a holiday.
Monday.
And we have a number of, here it is, I was looking for the email, but I have it written down here. We have a number of dates that we would propose if the commission would like to consider a new date, and we could do that today, or we could do it at the next meeting.
So August 5 is a holiday?
No, September 2nd.
Oh, September 2nd.
So some of the options that we have this room available, if the commission wants to consider that today, would be Monday, the 9th, from 2:00 to 4:30 p.m. Monday, the 16th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. Thursday, the 19th, at 5:00 p.m. And Monday, the 30th of September, at 4:00 p.m.
Oh, is that close?
Monday, the 30th.
That's too close to the October meeting.
4:00 p.m.
4:00 p.m. Oh, yeah, that is close. What time is the September 9th? What are the...
From 2:00 to 4:30.
Oh, too early.
Can we have an email about those different options, then the commission can decide on what's the best one?
I'll certainly email it to you tonight.
But the immediate request for the next month's meeting is to include the electric rate plan and anything else besides the ones already listed. Any additions or revisions to those items?
Hmm.
Going to talk about the public health goal report, response to the grand jury on the City Attorney's Office report, renewable energy update, Water Services Division update, and utility modernization update.
Do you anticipate a long electric rate plan discussion?
At this point, we'll go ahead and bring the report back, just incorporating the various different options we discussed. I don't expect that we would go through the full presentation all over again.
Right, okay.
It's all, the length of it will be contingent upon the amount of discussion, though.
Okay.
I mean, the option for this commission, this president, Ms. Chan, is to push other items, agenda items back if the electric rate plan becomes an overwhelming discussion.
Right.
Okay, any other updates, revisions? No, then let's close the agenda forecast. Next item, please.
I have adjournment.
Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.